Alright, so I told you to play the fucking game for it. I play the lead in the spirit of the United States of America and through the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, so tonight we're gonna have a work session. This is supposed to be in Banner Township here today. And what we're gonna do is we're going to discuss how we can, how you guys can get a group together of Banner Township citizens to relay to the Commission Road and Bridge concerns that you have out on, out in Banner Township. And you need to understand that what we're talking about here tonight is pretty much that. I mean, you know, you give us some examples to drive Banner Township, give us some examples of what you see, what you want, and what you think, and how you believe that you can help organize a group to help us. That's what this is about. And we've got 14 townships that we're gonna have meetings with. So I'm gonna tell you right now, don't expect something to happen overnight. Because we gotta get this with the other 13 townships we're gonna meet with. Then we'll try to prioritize how we get the road bridge, try to prioritize, you know, anything that you guys tell us right now. And then we'll get, we'll set up these work groups with the citizens that you guys select to relay things to us. So Pete?
Yeah, and Luke, I've talked a couple different times about this process. If you want to elect three members that will meet with us on a quarterly basis, just come in and have a conversation. Really, it would boil down to long-range planning. So we try to look out five years of where we want to be on certain roads. And so getting that input from the people who live in that area, I think is really valuable because what our blade operator or supervision may see as the thing that we want to do, like a full road rebuild, we clean the ditches, re-rock it, get that 4% slope back in, whatever that may be. You guys may have a different idea or a different opinion about what roads you think should be completely rebuilt to help us, to guide us on those five-year plans, where we're going with that. And that's the input I want, but really it's about developing three people that can meet quarterly and bring all of our... if we can get people to participate in this, to bring those, all the townships together once a quarter and just have those conversations. Because I think there's some real value inherent from you guys or the people that you represent. So that's where I'm at with this whole conversation. Like I said, Luke and I have had several conversations over the last probably six months about this. I even suggested going back to township. I'd like to hear your input on that.
At least our road operator wouldn't be gone all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's he at now?
Yeah, working up on W, yeah. And those are some things I'd love to engage in that conversation with you about, about how that process works right now. And, but, I mean, whenever you're ready for that.
Yep.
So...
Well, I've got a question. How often do the commissioners get out and drive up country roads?
All the time. Yes.
Now, I was told, Mark, that you drove the K Road on motorcycle.
I drove it as a motorcycle, a car and a truck.
Okay, how about driving it with a combine or a tractor?
Well, they don't have a combine. I drove my tractor.
But like I say, it's super rough when you put it on a...
So I think maybe, let me start with kind of walking you guys through what we try to do and what we try to use road and bridge to get done. When I talk about the five-year plan, we're looking at roads all across the county in all the different areas. W happens to be one of those that we're working on right now. In order for the county road and bridge to get something done like W, completely rebuilt, clean the ditches, clean tubes out, replace tubes if they need to be done, miles of that hauling gravel, build it back up. We are forced to pull people off their routes. I don't like, I don't like having to pull people off their routes because I've used this analogy before. It'd be like telling your postman, go shovel sand somewhere for six weeks and then come back, try and get caught up delivering these mail. It just doesn't work. So figuring out how to get that done, and I think we're headed in the right direction, where we can work on projects but not pull our blade operators off their routes. That's important, and we gotta get there. It's not cheap because you gotta hire more personnel sometimes. But we've just about got our, our bridge crew, what used to be called Bridge Crew is really a special crew now. And they do everything from work on backfilling bridges, we don't, they don't take any out, they don't install any. We hire that out, or crane without a compliance. But they'll wash tubes, they'll put tubes in, big tubes, they'll take care of all that. We do have a 12th grader so they can operate that, they can help guys get caught up in their area, some of those types of things. But are you guys interested in having three people represent Banner Creek, Banner Township to come in? Where, three people that will come in?
If I may speak for a bit, as the Lord of One, the Township Trustee in Banner Township.
Exactly, there you go. Congratulations.
I was written in, so I'm duly appointed to be this, you know, whether, I mean, I'm not gonna step on anybody's toes if they want to speak, but it can. I don't mean, if anything I say comes off offensive, I don't mean it to be that. I'm not, but as elected officials, you should be open to criticism. I don't understand why the commissioners want this task. Three commissioners to cover the entire county is not working. We are in a situation today where what's different than it was 30 or 40 years ago.
I agree.
We are in the first district now. Banner Township used to be in the second, got switched around. You can't cover it all. There's, I mean, there's no, I don't, I don't understand how you can, how you want to. I mean, every time, you know, 20 years ago, we had a county commissioner that was in our township. We were fortunate that we got the, you know, the attention. But just as the instance of K Road, you and I didn't see the same thing on it.
Sure.
Then I called in or talked to you, you went before the meeting and said, "I got another call on K Road. I don't think there's anything wrong." Those of us that live on it, drive on it...
And I speak, I didn't say there's nothing wrong with it. I said, "I didn't think it was that bad," for, for what it was. That's, that's what I...
Right, and yes, you said, "It's rough, it's gonna be a rough road." The problem was, it wasn't that way prior to. I was trying to stop it before it got unfixable, and we didn't see eye to eye. So just, I mean, weekly, I'm, we're fortunate now that all the meetings are videotaped. I don't have to come in and watch every meeting. I do think that you guys ought to look into having a videotaped of your own, you know, just so that it's all done.
We are, we're in the process.
Perfect. But that's unfortunate that I get to watch the meeting at my leisure, and so I've watched every one. And weekly, someone calls you and says, "Hey, there's a problem with my road." You go before the Public Works Director and say, "Hey, we had this, I got a call about this road, let's check into it." By the next week, there's somebody else that's called, maybe 10 people have called. Do you go back and check that the problem that you identified last week was actually addressed? And in our current situation, the Public Works Director has four titles. Does not have the time, and I understand that, you know, you're working into...
We're, we're in the process of trying to straighten some of them too.
And by doing this, I'm also trying to offer a different solution as opposed to that. The Road and Bridge Superintendent or Foreman or whatever's been a revolving door for the last 20 years. And people get on a commission to control the road and bridge. And I personally don't want that task. I mean, I understand you've got a lot more to deal with, but road and bridge seems like the number one priority on everybody's list. And we are in a three-year election cycle. If we don't like what you do, the only recourse we have is to vote you out or find someone to run against you. And I don't like that because there's no continuity. You know, you're here now, you're gone the next time somebody else comes in with a new agenda, and they're gonna fire the Road and Bridge Superintendent or whatever. I mean, that's been agendas in the last 15 years. People come in, wanna fix the roads. I'm offering a solution to give it back to the townships. And I, it's a, it's a model, it's not a, all, you know, it's not a one-way or the other. You can take different towns or counties around us and build our own little thing that will work. I don't think it's on a quarterly deal. I think it's, it's more than that. It's, I mean, there's a lot of things. Our roads, our township has not had a blade operator very consistently in the last two years. There are roads, 214 Road between H and I has not had rock on it in 20 years. It's still the fly ash from Jeffries from 20 to 30 years ago. Two weeks ago, we had a rain event that was catastrophic. That, that style of rain just ruined every road. And then, like you said, last week, you come back three days later and the road's back to hardpan and looks good. Well, we haven't had a blade for, very regularly, for two years. And our roads aren't that bad. They're bad, but they're not terrible. There's potholes, there's, the water's running down the middle of the road, but they're not terrible. So my question is, if we're getting by in two years without a blade, but the county has 12 blades, what are those other blades doing that, I mean, we're spending a lot of money to drive those blades up and down the road and not really, is it even necessary? I drove S Road north of 9 Highway. Washboards like you wouldn't believe. There's a county employee that lives on that road. And the road hadn't been bladed because the grass was, you know, you could see the grass out on the edges of the road. It hadn't been bladed all summer. What is that blade operator doing all year? But those are the kind of things that if you put that back to the township to let the people have more control... And I'm not saying, "Give us a blade or give a dump truck," but is there a way to budget? So, or that we can say, you know, if you say, "The blade is worth so much an hour." And we come in and we say, "Okay, we want so many hours this week." That, you know, I've got a thousand things in my head that I'm trying to, you know... I'm not gonna discount the county employees, they're great, they're great employees. I don't wanna take anything away from any of that. But as with any time you're spending other people's money, there is waste. You know, probably everybody in this room has a tractor and rotary mower. And we're paying a county employee to drive around to fill their time with a rotary mower to mow the roadbanks. When, as a township, we could pay ourselves to do that. Or the dirt roads, the minimum maintenance roads. We've got, there was one road this year that had sunflowers growing up seven feet tall. I went down it to catch cows, got down it, banged the mirrors the whole way there, coming out, and it was three days after rain, and I said, "Boy, this is gonna be tight," but, you know. Went home and got the trailer, and by the time I got back, Galen had come down there because he thought he needed it, and he plowed the sunflowers to the middle of the road. He was trying to fix the road, but it was right in the middle of what I was doing. And it just, there was one situation, but Galen is pulling himself off of his area to come into ours, and he hits little pieces here and there, you know. When I came and talked in August, the thing that Linda said as I walked out the door, "Sounds like we need to get a blade out there." And two weeks later, Brandon finally came down for about three days because he was done with deer run, and he had to get to W. And he said, "What do you need me to hit?" And hit a couple of the high spots, but there's roads that have not been bladed in two years. And so all of our money is going to everybody else, and we're not getting any... Benefit of that. Now, I understand that we can't keep all of our tax money in our township. That's not fair. We drive other roads in the county. But we're a classic example. If we are, we're not, you know, the roads aren't, in our area, aren't being bladed, and they're not terrible, why are we wasting our money everywhere else? Up in the Whiting area, I heard that there was, there's a consistent blade operator in there, but you had to pull two blades to go up and help him because he wasn't keeping up, for whatever reason. I don't know if that's true or not, but if it is, then that's a problem. That I think that, I'm, I'm looking for a solution to utilize our money because, let's face it, we don't have a lot of money.
Sure.
We've gotta think outside the box to try to find out if there's a better way than just maintaining the status quo.
And that's, that's what we're here for, right?
And, and I appreciate, from the get-go, I appreciate that you have continued this conversation because you could've just said, "That, we're just gonna let it go and keep going."
And I don't think you find out with any of the three of us that we're just gonna push you guys off and say, "No, we don't wanna do that. We're gonna, we're gonna look into things and see what we can do." Like, Don, did you have something?
Yeah, I got a lot, but I'm not gonna go there. I've been watching them dump rock in the same damn hole for 70 years, and it ain't good. All you're doing is wasting your money. I'd like to see them selectively improve, like every other mile of road, every other north and south road. And then, so you could transit over from your, if you're on a, you only gotta drive a mile on a bad road to get to a good road. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yes.
And I'd like, we need a 20-year plan, not a 50-year plan. Go out there and get some federal money.
We're trying.
Chip and seal some roads, paint some roads, not all of them. So if you did one this year and one next year eventually, go ahead.
We, we applied for a $33, $34 million grant.
Yeah.
And what we were gonna utilize that grant to do was go in on some of these chip and seal roads. You guys, I got semi, you guys got semis now, our semis are on, running up and down some of these chip and seal roads. So what we were gonna do is go in and if the base, core, if the base is good, we're gonna put six inches of asphalt on top of it and try to make connector routes where you don't have to travel very far, and you can hit a hard surface and make it 75 or wherever that may be. But we didn't get the grant. And we've applied for it again, we'll apply for it...
Just keep chipping away at it. Another thing, a big frustration, mine is that, you know, and I've, I've had the black ground moved all over the world. I've lived all over the United States. Most states, you get a fine from the EPA for the dust on these roads. If you had a construction company, they'd shut you down just because of the dust. It's, it's not healthy. So it costs about $7,500 a mile to put dust abatement on. It's a, I mean, all this, all this rock that is coming currently is 30% lime. And if, you're just buying dust and all you're paying for. So we're required to have a certain amount of lime screenings with the rock because otherwise, all you have is pebbles. So if you put washed rock out there, it'll all be in the ditch by afternoon traffic because the speed of traffic running up and down these roads blows it off. Some of the things that we're trying on some of these, just wet the roads and roll it in where you put that rock on. They're doing that up on W, that really holds it to place. But the calcium that we put on 142 down there has held that road together. It gets a lot of heavy truck traffic going five miles over the course. So there are some things that we've tried and that we are continuing to try, putting more dust abatement on more roads especially. And this would be something, you know, you guys could help with is identifying the routes for the roads in your area that have the heaviest commuter traffic. You know, we can put traffic counters out there, we can look at it from that aspect, but it all costs dollars. And, you know, we have been improving roads. We've cleaned more ditches in this county in the last one and a half years than have been done in 15 years. And I have documents to prove it because we make road and bridge whenever a taxpayer calls in with a concern. That's logged and that's color-coded, whether it's been started, whether it's been in progress or whether it's been finished. It has names, and if they'll give it, name and phone number on there. We get that quarterly so we can identify it. Why is this one 18 months old? Why is nothing being done? And we do that in the meetings, in open session a lot of time. We'll say, we'll look through those. So we know when stuff is called in there. It ain't, it still isn't perfect because I still get phone calls from people that called in four times and nobody's responded. I get that. It, it's not a perfect system, but it's way better than what we had. It was four and a half years ago, what they'd do is write it on a piece of paper, they'd hand it to the foreman, they'd go in the seat of his truck, next thing you know, it's under the seat. It's not a perfect system, but it is way better. And, and I can tell you, answering these calls of concerns from you folks is a very high priority. And it always doesn't, it doesn't always get done as fast as people want because those guys out there, they have to evaluate what's priority. And I know, I get it, I live on a gravel road, and what's in front of my house is usually always high priority, right? For where I drive. But yeah, I wanna figure out a way, I like your idea about mowing. I mean, I hadn't thought of that, so you now...
And I understand the liabilities and things. I mean, that's, we can't even go out with a skid loader and fill in a puddle. I've got a pile of rock there, if I could go do it, but no, I'll get in trouble because if somebody has a wreck, you know, I get that.
But the mowing part? I mow my roads. I mow my neighbor's roads last year and got my ass chewed. By, by a neighbor.
That's where I want to come back to. I want to come back to mow all of them.
Just hang on a second, just get him out of the question.
No, it's a comment, but it's a rock. You said, you say that it's law that you've got to have?
It's not law, but, but the, the standards for building a road require it to have a percentage of fines in it. So that you have to have small gravel for the fines to hold the bigger gravel in place, if that makes sense. If you have just inch or quarter water pot, there's nothing to hold it. It's not a fine. You know, I mean.
Well, what, what we ended up with is when it's dry, you've got this dust.
You do.
And when it's wet, you've got this slimy thing.
You do.
But I don't, and I'm.
If you can, I mean, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but we haul gravel out of four different ports. Some of the best gravel right down here at Betis, now, we were getting some out of Abson that's pretty good gravel too. A lot of it is the density of it, how hard it is. But we haul gravel from all these, they're hams out here west of home.
Yeah, I know, they go by my house forty times a day.
Yeah. And so they're out of, I think their, their gravel actually wasn't, it had too many fines in it the other day, so we quit hauling it out of there. So you gotta have the fines in the gravel or it just won't, it won't stand the road. It just won't. And that's not me, that's, that's, it will near tell us that, people who are way smarter than me when it comes to building a road. What's your question?
I know, Nemo County, I worked with them seven years for township. Talking about getting control of township, that's, that's a whole nother knee turning over. We put three township trustees in charge of all their roads and all their money and hiring people to do the stuff.
Right now, we have three commissioners in charge of the entire county, not just our township. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Well, township, you get part of the main roads, county, county still takes care of it.
And I will, I will tell you, you know, yes, there's three commissioners that are charged for all 1100 miles of road. That is correct. But we don't handle day-to-day operations. That's why we have a public works director. And I, and I just want to give you some history on why we don't have a road and bridge superintendent by now. When, when Linda, who was the former superintendent, went away, we had a conversation with our blade operators. We wanted them to take ownership of their 80 to 90 mile road. You know, I don't know, is it too much to ask an employee to take ownership of what they have? And, and we give them all the time in the world. If you see something, fix it while you're there. Don't put it on a piece of paper. It takes you 10 minutes to fix a drainage at the end of the bridge because it's not, it's not flowing off to the creek. Take a few minutes and just fix that. But we thought giving those people the ownership of their areas was the right route to go. Letting one, we need somebody, we need somebody who is out there making sure that work's getting done, people are getting, that they're using the right techniques, whatever that is. And we're in the process to hire somebody to do that and to hold people accountable.
But what, what do you say to the residents of Banner Township when you have for the last two years pulled our blade operator away? But there's 12 blades in 15 townships, so.
But it's, it's not, there's not, I'll give you a second, you're fine. There is not a blade in each township. There is a blade in each.
It's bigger.
Yeah, it's a little bit bigger than township.
Right. I know, I mean, it's part of Grant, part of Franklin.
Right.
But, I mean, but where Brandon's at, it is.
And I get it, and it, it is a big, it has a big deal. It's not fair to you guys. I'll, I'll be the first to admit, I don't like it. But he's one of the best blade operators we got, right? And so in order to rebuild these roads, we had to have somebody who knew what they're doing to go in with a crew and rebuild these roads. Because it's catch 22. If we don't rebuild these roads, clean the ditches, clean the tubes out, like you said, a mile or two here, a mile or two there, we try to rotate around the county, then we'll never get ahead.
And you're always, yeah, you're way behind because everything else is.
You are.
There's no routine maintenance, pulling those ditches out in the middle of summer when it's dry, putting that back in the middle of the road or, you know.
We get chewed though if you do that.
And that's why I say, take that away from the commissioners and let them, let them chew on the township. Because I think that, I know everybody loves to mow their road ditches. But we've got to fix the road, the ditch to get the water off of the road. I need me to say, we own two, you know, we have a right of way to clean that out. Because right now, there is no material to blade and to fix a puddle. So what do they do? They go cut to get enough material to fill the puddle. Now you've got a three-inch lip on the edge of the road and the water can't get off. K Road, last spring, right north of my house, Brandon went in and cleaned the ditches all out. Guess what? There's a three-inch lip already in less than a year. Because there's no material. Because when we go down below the rock, it's all spread out all over the road. And within a week, it's in the ditch. If we give snow, it's in the ditch and there's no windrow to move back and forth across the road.
But what, but what we've asked them to do, instead of creating that windrow, because there's issues with the windrow. What we've asked them to do is dump the rock in the middle of the road, keep that crown there, let the traffic push it back out and then bring it back in. Because having that windrow there, water runs down that windrow, now you have issues there.
But they make relief to us.
Yeah, in some situations, we do have a blade operator over on this side, young man that, he's good, he understands. And so he said, there are certain times of the year where maybe we could do the windrow. Great, let's try it. Let's see how it works. I'm all ears when it comes to somebody who's willing to learn and, and teach us some new things. I'm not afraid to try some stuff. So what he's been doing is working. And so we can adapt and change and make that happen.
Okay.
Off, kind of one of the subjects earlier, but off this, just like, so you're going for money for chip and seal road? I don't know, other than maybe the lighting road, Jackson County has a good chip and seal road. I don't see why you're getting, I mean, it's grant money, can you get grant money to build, fix the rock roads instead of chip and seal? Because you can't, you can't maintain a chip and seal road.
Sure.
So K Road's terrible. I mean, there's no business, my opinion, Jackson County may be business having chip and seal.
And that's why we're not doing it anymore.
I agree.
Well, you were talking about looking for grant money to build chip and seals.
No, no. But asphalt, with the existing chip and seals, already got a good base.
Right, and there's, there's stipulations.
But can you maintain that once you did it? Can you maintain it?
We do, we do have enough money to come in budget, and that's one of the stipulations. If you have enough money budget that you can maintain those asphalt roads. See, the problem with chip and seal is they just break down. They're a nightmare to keep track of. But by putting asphalt, and that's one of the stipulations of getting this grant, there was a whole bunch of stuff involved. You've got to check all the boxes to get $30 million out of the federal government. If, if they, they have to be these hard surface roads that, that are going to connect people to get them out. Well, right now, that's most of the chip and seal roads. They're bringing people out to 75 Highway.
So what happens in 15 years on these asphalt roads, like the roads that are on the reservation now that are poor? I mean, are you going to be able to maintain those?
Yeah, that's.
Because if you can't, you might as well be just building good rock roads.
Yeah. We can't use the money used to build.
Well, I get that. I get that.
I would love to. Where do they know if you can actually put that due for gravel?
I guess, I mean, your, your time and effort for your employees too.
The nice, the one nice thing about if an asphalt road is built correctly, and that's why you court it, to make sure you have a good base, we've already courted some just to check them, is you can go ahead and bill off an inch, half inch and resurface it and you've got your roads back. There's no perfect answer. And, and it is very frustrating to us, that's one of the, it's very frustrating to us not having enough money to purchase this gravel. And I don't know how many people realize Betis has raised their rock prices twice in 2025 already. And we're not done with the year yet. It's frustrating because when I started as commissioner four and a half years ago, it was a little over $13 a ton, now it's over $20. Where do you come up with that money? You know, we're dumping more rock on these roads than ever. We used the entire budget. But we know where that money's going to do the projects. It's not that we just go out and dump it. Anyway.
Do you guys have a process in place to get qualified operators, populations, you know, if you're having to pull the qualified operators off to go to different places, which you're managing to hire in?
Sure. Right now, we're pretty full on, we're full on operators and that's one of the things, one reason we do call Brandon is because he's a trainer also.
We pay him extra.
He's teaching.
And I'm not taking any of that.
How to do it properly.
We're, we're fortunate to have the best, we just don't have him because.
Yeah. I have a great question. If we do, if we have a man in here or a woman who's, who's trainable, we send them to schools to teach them. And then we've looked at people like Brandon, or some of our other operators, and we've run into shadowing, that's why they've gotten complaints that you've got two blades following each other. Right, right. Here's part of the problem. Until we raise the rate of pay, we get a couple of years under their belt and they become real good.
I understand.
But they're gone. They're going to someplace to get 30 plus now. But yeah, we do, our pay scale has been changed so that the more you learn, the better you become in your job, the more money you can make. Used to be everybody just got to raise. It's not that way anymore. I believe if you want more money, you earn it. But kind of a good question. It, it is tough to find people that are qualified operators. But I don't know how many of you have ever run a blade, but blade's probably one of the hardest pieces of instruction equipment for our, for them to run.
Isn't there, is there a heavy equipment school out last month before?
I couldn't answer that.
It always, we've done that in ways in business.
How does that work?
It don't pay off. They've got to have experience in order to get it.
Yeah, and the only way to give guys, guys and gals experience is hit them out on the road. And it, you know, the young man that's down around the Mayette area, he's, he's, he's making some really good strides, he's learning. That's the key, is finding people who want to learn and want to get better and want to take ownership. But that's kind of off the beaten path, what we're here really to talk about, I guess. But how do you guys see this three-person board coming together? Do you think it's worthy of, of it? Going back fully to township, partially to townships? What are your thoughts on that?
I come from a township down by El Dorado. Well, that was a lot of headaches for one farmer. He got all the phone calls.
And I'm going to be a popular person.
But it's no different than three commissioners not being very popular because you're here on seven different townships, I mean, in the first district.
For sure. And it, I mean.
And I, I tell people, call me. You know, if I don't know anything, I can't pass it on road and bridge. But you know, the first thing that I tell people who call me, do you remember? Have you called road and bridge?
And I have.
And I know that.
And my problem, my deal with that process was, as you said, that was the process that you used. I was trying to say, you need to take a look at this because this isn't working. And it's, before it's too late. And that didn't happen. And so that spurred this whole conversation.
One of the reasons that did not happen the way that you were expecting it to is because of what we've been talking about here with Brandon. We've had to pull him out to do the projects.
No, I'm talking about the chip and seal.
Okay, chip and seal, okay, well, that's, that's.
That was, that was a disaster train wreck.
Okay.
I tried to stop it before it was too late. And not ignored, but not heard.
Well, you were, you were heard, but there, there was not a better process for us to use at the time, right?
Right. And so now, after it's done and the road is totally screwed, we're saying, huh, let's not do that again.
We didn't, I didn't say that. I did not say that at all. The, the road, when we went, when we went through and we did the same thing that you ran out there on 75 with the, with the heat eye doing in the cracks, okay? The exact same thing to the state ditch.
And is that the same material that goes in the chip and seal?
I believe so, yes.
And so Scott said as the deal that chip and seal doesn't seal. Or, or chip and seal doesn't fix the crack, it seals it. Well, we fixed the crack with the exact same material that we're chipping and sealing.
The oil is a different oil, it's a stickier oil from what.
But it left a ridge of rock.
Right.
And then we sealed over the top of it. So what we did was created a thousand speed box. And as they were doing it, I was saying, this isn't right. Let's stop and take a look at what we're doing so that we don't have to live with this for the next five years. Whether I was heard, I wasn't taken seriously. We didn't stop. We didn't go take a look and say, are we doing the right thing? We spent four employees for six weeks and at a cost of between $30,000 and $40,000, depending on what the labor max bill was, because that wasn't included. So this just highlighted the fact that 15 townships and three commissioners, just you don't have to listen to us. I mean, Lynn Rieschek came in last week and talked about 246 rip, said it's been bad for 20 years.
Well, we've got a 70-year-old.
Did anything, did anything happen this week?
I cannot answer that. We'll have to talk to Scott and find out.
Did you talk to him this morning?
No, we were on other things.
Right. That's what I'm getting at. If you move to other things.
Yes, we're not talking specifically about that because there's other issues that we were talking to him about.
Right. That's what I'm saying, there's too many issues for three or four with the public works director having four things to be able to follow up on what happened the last time.
Typically, Luke, what, what happens in those situations? Because again, as commissioners, we don't handle the day-to-day operations. And what you're saying is, is somebody checking up on Scott or road and bridge to make sure what has been asked is getting done. Am I hearing you right?
Someone.
Okay. So yes, we do check up on the work that has been assigned to them, but it is not on a weekly basis or a daily basis. We have to assume if we give responsibility to an employee to take care of something, it's going to get taken care of. When that issue is brought to them. If I have to babysit a public works director, I don't need a public works director. I can do.
That's my whole point is that I don't think that the commissioners should have to, I don't think you should be feeling phone calls about road issues. I, because that's too many. I mean, there's too much. And then you go and, you talk to him and then you don't, I mean, it does, you don't, you don't have time to follow it up because next week you've got 10 more calls.
As far as, as far as what you just said, that is what I was elected for, is to receive phone calls, talk to the public right here like I am right now. It is not, I, I get phone calls at nine o'clock at night. That's what I got elected for. I tell people, call me, talk to me, see me at Walmart, talk to me there. I'll talk to you at any time, any place, anywhere. And I will pass on the concerns that you folks have.
I'm trying to offer a better solution.
That's what we're listening for.
To not have to put all, because yes, you were elected to represent all of us, but there's no way that you can represent all of us. Pot County just went to seven, or to five commissioners.
In, in a perfect world, how would you see that hierarchy set up within Banner? How, what, what would you like to see it look like?
I don't, I mean, I don't know that, it's too nuanced to really put it all. I don't want to go to the whole taxing entity because while Banner may, I mean, we have 120 homes or somewhere in there, Grant has four. I mean, there's, it's not the same. I don't want to go that. Would it, one possibility, and I don't, I mean, I think it would be a lot of probably logistic paperwork nightmare of billing each hour of, you know, say we need a load of rock, then we are charged to the county for that load of rock. If we need 10 hours of the blade, we are charged that. And if we get to the end of the year, over the last two years, we haven't had a lot of rock or operator, all of a sudden, we've got a surplus. And then we get to use it the next year and we get to say, okay, Emery, we're going to go ahead and remove the, the washboards from K16 to 222. We're going to fix that. Or some, you know, I, I want to see to where the people that see the roads every day can have more input, have more say, other than just letting our money go everywhere else.
So, okay, so I get, I get a question. You said, so, you know, a load of rock, you get billed for it, 10 hours of blade work, you get billed for it. So where's the money coming from? Well, I, I don't, I'm not.
Our tax base. I mean, you know, maybe somebody, Christie may know, how much, how much tax money?
So, hang on, hang on. So what you're saying is, depending on your township, you want us to split out the tax money that Banner Township pays and put it a penny over here and Grant over here, right?
Not completely, because that's not fair because we also drive over the roads. And that's why I say it's, I don't think it can work as us, them, those.
Okay. Well, what I, what I'm going to say is, I'm going to start by saying that my taxes are around $3,300 and I, I think that's very fair. But I'm going to tell you right off the bat that only $578 of that $3,300 goes to the road and bridge department. And, and what you're, what you're saying right there about the keeping track of how much tax money, it would go very quickly, Luke, because the reality of it is, people in the city of Holton and where the valuations are, and God bless us, I wish we had more industry and businesses, but they're the ones that are paying for our, our road improvements, whatever we get. We use up our, our little.
No, that's why I say, we don't have enough money to, to pay the blade operator for the year.
It would go real quick. And, and, and you talked about either or on the township or the unit, but you can do just a township with remain the county and a county unit system. We can still decide as a township to tax ourselves a little bit more and have direction on where that tax money went.
I didn't know that. So that, yeah, so you can actually do.
I suggested that to Douglas Township for years and years and years, where they would because they have, you know, the population and more valuation.
So basically, the county would, would continue.
Continue as they are.
As they are.
But you could generate tax money if we decided to do that. That would just go as a township.
And that would be just a township, but.
Because we, because we had talked about too, some of the.
Unless something's changed.
We're going to have to look at that, because I thought, I thought the policy said that. So we're going to have to look at that seat.
You used to could.
Yeah, that's good information.
You would know.
One of, one of the other things that we had looked at is taking and combining townships, not, not completely combining, but say, you've got two townships that don't have a lot of population in them, and, and utilizing the strength of two versus one. Because that's kind of what we're doing now with 11 blades and the townships that we have. What would it look like, Luke, if, if you were able to have or give, have a conversation with, with the blade operator in your area on a weekly basis and along with the superintendent to just give some, just to have that conversation and give some direction and develop that relationship? How would that look to you? I mean, what would that be?
That's a, that's a very good possibility of the elected three-member township board gets to, I mean, they, they're the ones that are represented and they, people call and say, hey, we need to talk about this. Yeah, then you go and meet.
So then you go up to road and bridge and you sit down with your operator and you meet them out on the road? Heck, I don't care.
Well, I mean, I get it. I understand why you don't want blade operators confronted on the road and because they're going to get chewed out for this and that, whatever.
Yeah.
A lot of times, it's kind of handy when they're out here and say, hey, I need to get my swatter down this road, can you go fix it for me while you're here? Yeah, they're going somewhere else.
You think weekly would be enough to, to have that conversation with, so if the, the road and bridge superintendent that we hired, so today I'm going out, I'm meeting with Luke and I'm meeting with Brandon and we're going to have a conversation this week to kind of give us some direction. We know what projects we're working on, but we want to hear from you. Is that something that I?
That's probably the best, I mean, some type of relationship where we.
I, I agree. Yeah.
It's a start.
It's what?
It's a start.
It's a start. I think having that conversation and developing exactly what you said, relationship. So that, that blade operator and that superintendent now get to know you, you're talking to your neighbors and the other two people that are elected, and you're having that conversation versus having to call Mark or me or whatever, now you get to have that. And it, you'd have to understand that it would be a conversation that's not, by God, this is what you're going to do today. It can't be that. Because at the end of the day, he still works for Jackson County. But I think developing that relationship and, and doing some of those things, I think is.
And it, it gives, and it's been said that there are, you know, nobody runs for township positions because there's no power. But it gives a little bit of power back to the people to elect that spokesperson.
Sure.
And it takes some pressure off of the commission because now you're feeling a phone call from one instead of from third.
Sure.
And if, you know, if we're not getting somewhere with road and bridge, and I'm calling Mark saying, you know, and then Laura's calling Mark going, my road's messed up. And so, you know, it's all going through one route. And that's why I say it's very nuanced.
Is there only one public works man for the whole county?
Yes.
But he has three other titles as well.
Yeah, he's got three other titles too.
Well, the public works director is his title, but he is over Road and Bridge and recycling...
Is he the one that's driving the white pickup up and down the road all the time?
There's... We got all white pickups. So, I can tell.
I'd like to say this is a new one. New one, fairly footed.
They're all fairly new.
But in that... And I understand we're moving forward to an actual superintendent.
Yes.
When you say go out and inspect the bridges on the reservation and go do this and that, well, he's also got to run the landfill and the noxious weed and the... I mean, that's stretching him pretty thin.
Sure. You're right.
And he's not going to take some of those things as seriously because he's too busy with everything else.
Well, some of it, like he will delegate to Matt to go out and look, you know, bridges and things like that. So, I mean, he does delegate certain responsibilities to certain people.
Right. Matt does a good job of taking care of what he needs.
But it... And going back to, if I was able to meet with them on a weekly basis, I'm going to remember the things we talked about last week and I'm going to follow up. Whereas in your situation, there's 10 other things.
The... You know, I think we're making some strides here and getting some planning laid out. My one concern there is when you said that people are calling us and we are relaying through Road and Bridge, but you guys want to take their responsibility on now the three-person board and whoever's elected as trustee or whoever, you know, whoever's going to head that three-person board or the township, then you're going to have 18 different people talking to the Road and Bridge superintendent.
15, one from each... I mean, one representative from township.
Yes, he's going to quit first. So, I mean, when you have... I'm playing devil's advocate here and looking at that where you have three and getting the phone calls to Road and Bridge and then us reinforcing it versus 15 people whoing hitting them. I mean, this done in here, this done in here, this done in here. And I'm just trying to see if that's a viable option or not.
I think it's more viable if you have a blade operator that is consistent. If you have one this week and then if he has to get pulled over here or you don't have one in replace him, it doesn't work.
Right. And that's where I was kind of going earlier. When we finish W, there's going to be no more major projects this year or next year. We did not budget for any major projects next year. It is going to be strictly road maintenance, ditch cleaning, tube cleaning, everything there.
What are you doing with the sales tax money then if you're not doing any major projects?
It's going to be going for rock on the roads.
Yeah, we're going to put all of it on...
Yeah.
On the roads. With our goal is to take all the money, the add-on budget money and the point four percent sales tax money and then the money that we get...
Fuel tax and...
Yeah, fuel tax, thank you. So, there's three different pots. Put that all on gravel on roads and not do any... Not do any major ditch work or do a W like with the sleep rebuild.
Just the cleaning, the normal cleaning of ditches, not major. Just a...
Yeah. So, you're saying we can't take gravel and fill these potholes in on the road or, I mean, you drive through them and sort it in the ditch? I mean, we're not able to go fill them?
From a liability standpoint, no.
So, I'll give you an example. I was headed up T-Rose up by Todd Stoffers and there was a guy out in the middle of the road filling up a pothole. I just waved at him, kept right on going. But in the position he was in, if I'd have been one of these kids coming home and popped over that hill, I would have smacked him right in the side if he was sitting sideways in the middle of the road. You're going to be liable. It won't be the county. If somebody's out in the middle of the road fixing a pothole, that individual's going to take on that liability. I appreciate sometimes there's people who go out and mow the roads and do some things like that, but yeah, it's just a huge liability. And so, just by everywhere.
I'm just saying, because there are potholes along the road and we're always taking our bits of gravel and dumping them in there. I mean...
And part of that is, you know, like up there going to Bayetta the other day, so that young man who's been there about two and a half years or so, he's using scareifier to come back because if you don't scarify the holes out and then blade gravel back into them, it... By afternoon, it's going to be blown back out. And then when you scarify that whole area and you bring that back in, you've got a lot of dust, now you end up with a hole. So, really, you've got to put a little jagged gravel on there to fill it back in. It's not just as easy as scarifying a pothole while you're driving home, unfortunately. You talked about, or we were talking about sales tax. One thing I'm going to bring up with y'all while you're here is what we're looking at doing. I'm a big fan of sales tax instead of taxing people's property. So, we're going to... We've asked legislature to change our sales tax from four to five for after sale. And we're going to not allow any incorporated city to have any of that money. Here's what that does. That increases probably about $100,000 a month that would go strictly for roads. None of the cities would get any of that money and it would all... We have to define what it is going to. It would all go to roads. That's going to take some relief off of us having to raise add-on tax to get more money because we cut $200,000 out of the road budget, out of the gravel budget this year. I don't know if you guys realize that, but we, in order to be revenue neutral, we had to cut $200,000 out of that budget. So, by doing the sales tax, if everybody will vote it in, that will take a huge amount of relief off of having to raise property taxes just by more gravel. It... To me... Yeah, go ahead.
Years ago, and I'm sure Linda probably remembers, we had the local add-on tax reduction that we would get money from TRA. Yeah. And every once in a while, I hear them talking about them helping us out. Do you guys wish for that?
Well, it's funny.
We did.
But the legislature and their grand wisdom took all that money and absorbed it into their...
Into their general fund.
And they took that completely off the books. Our association counties was fighting hard for that because that would have been huge for a county that votes.
That was huge back when we received...
It was.
Yeah, when we lost...
I don't think it's ever coming back.
I don't either. And that's something that the legislature would have... They have control of it. We fought for it. We went down, Mark went down, spoke for it and we talked to our legislators, but...
I get called a radical gravel rouser, so you know.
But yeah, they've completely done away. So, it would have to be new legislation to create that again. But that's great.
Yeah, it's totally gone.
Yeah.
Off the books.
But sales tax would come up for vote next year. It's going to run out.
So, any questions about the sales tax and what that means? I mean...
Is it just going to go for gravel?
That's correct. Gravel.
You know, for roads. So, if we need to fix a chip and seal road, it can go for roads.
But I ain't going to buy new grader because you guys need it.
No.
I mean, you guys, sometimes wasteful.
So, I don't know if it's wasteful because I'm a fan of having good equipment. And if what we have done is looked at it from setting these pieces of equipment up on a seven-year rotation because in seven years, they come out of warranty and you lose all your filters and all that service that goes with it. So, we were trying to get on a seven-year rotation because we don't have a shop set up to do major work on heavy equipment. We can do some stuff, but all that work was having to go down to the capital or go on there. So, for us, it made more sense to have newer equipment that stayed under warranty. So, when it did break down, all we had to do was call them out. You know, some people think they ought to buy used equipment. I just... I just don't buy that philosophy with the amount of roads and it's the kind of work we have to get done. Same thing with the dump trucks. If you want to keep them rolling, you've got to have equipment. We had some really, really old equipment, maybe 12, 13,000-hour machines, dump trucks that would just fall apart. We did take some of those that hadn't been rebuilt. The good quality machines, we have rebuilt, seemed to make sense. I mean, grader's now supposed to happen in the mall.
And so, if grader breaks down, has a major malfunction, pick up the phone call and they come pick it up, take it down to the shop, bring us another one, they got one to shop, so...
Yeah, it's a delicate balance trying to figure that out.
And hours on the rig makes a difference.
Oh, sure.
And how bad it's going to be then.
And how it's been ran.
Yes.
Can you lease the equipment?
You can. That's another good question. I, you know, I think we can go back and take another look at leasing some equipment.
Because we had our heavy equipment at company for thirty years. We got to lease because that way it was still under warranty, it was their problem, that it wasn't money.
Kind of high off as much...
Yeah.
More chuck. That's a good thought.
And you can budget for that. It's an annual expense that...
Yep, you're right. What would it look like if... I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I was going to say, what's it look like for hiring contractors to do ditch work?
We've had that conversation.
Does it ditch work? Yeah. Clean ditches? Yeah, clean ditches, you know? Stop taking a piece away from just a... Well, yeah. One thing we've talked about, you know, and we've kicked around and looked at and we just haven't bit the bullet yet, is do we hire contractors to come in and work the roads? You know? I'm just saying, I look at it here and there to take some relief off of your Road and Bridge crew. Say, you know, you want to do a mile of road next year, maybe you, you know, you get some bids and comes back, you've been working in the budget that this contractor cleans out this mile of road.
And I'd like to look at local contractors.
Right.
And it's... Right. And we did do that on... We were working up by Jackson Heights and instead of pulling all our dump trucks off, we called down to Bettis, like down here off 24, said, "Hey, you got some end dumps? Yep, we can get you two guys up there." Well, now they're hauling with their end dumps and our guys are out with their graders. And so, that worked out well. It's expensive, but I mean, a hundred and eighty dollars an hour.
But if you look at the long-term picture, it's expensive to not have that maintainer on the road consistently because it's going to come back and bite you in the end of that period.
That's a good idea to just have local contractors, if they're qualified, come in and clean those ditches out. Then the other nice part about that is all their neighbors are going to see it for not doing a good job, pal, putting a whole new gallon of gas.
Yes, sir.
Actually, if you figured out all your expenses, your truck and your operator, it probably is not that much more expensive to hire than it is to do it.
You mean for everything?
Huh?
You mean for everything?
No, I mean, if it costs you $110 an hour...
Right.
To do a project. It costs you to operate your own truck.
Sure.
An hour.
Yep.
My thing with some of that is, as it is with any government entity, is the efficiency. Like if you were hiring someone to blade the roads, well, we're paying the blade operator to drive to and from their house every day, so they've lost that time to get that done. Whereas if you were paying somebody, you're paying for the hours of their work. So, that's where, you know, there's times that you'll see the blade going by at three mile an hour because they're 45 minutes from quitting time and they can't get home until, you know... It's not taking... I'm not saying anything. We've got great employees. They're all...
I know what you mean.
But the other thing is what, as we have proven, I mean, you were talking about new machines and all of this and that. Well, we haven't had a machine running our area, so we're proving that we don't need a full-time blade operator. And if we could get somebody occasionally, I mean, I take occasionally right now rather than spare it.
Do they make maps for you that so you know what's happening? Like, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I used to make maps when I was Road and Bridge for the...
They've got GPS on them.
We have GPS.
That's why I'm saying you should know that it's not like...
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons we took... For accountability, that's one of the reasons we put GPS on there, so...
Yeah, because now we can tell if the blade's down, they're running four, Ian, they're running three mile an hour, or six mile an hour. And it shows in real time where they've been in the last seven hours. Also with our dump trucks.
But even for three months, you know for three months?
Oh, it's just gotten up and running full within the last month.
Oh, okay.
So, we've had it on several pieces of equipment for three months, but not everything.
Yeah. And each blade operator required to give an account of where they've been that day and what roads they were on. And that's all along the Road and Bridge. So, yes, they can, but now with GPS, it's going to make it much easier. We have the ability to pull that up on our laptops and see what people missed.
Yeah.
I was going to say, what would it... What would you guys think about just doing a test since you're already elected? Here the next week or two, start having you meet with, once we get our new superintendent hired, and just start having those conversations. What do you think?
I don't have a problem with it because I don't want your job out. I don't want to manage the county. But I'm one of... I mean, I'm more willing to have a say in our group.
What you said, Steve. I mean, let's try something.
That's fine.
On a basis of travel.
Yeah. Good question. I think it'd be interesting.
We talk about Brandon here. If you call him your blade operator, it's like Brandon, honey, he's the best hand you guys got. That's why we never got him.
Yeah.
He's just...
Yeah.
Hey, you guys had this problem for how many years? Brandon ain't in our area. Brandon ain't in our area. You guys know this. Let's hire... Let's hire somebody to replace Brandon and let him do his job, especially the jobs where he doesn't want to leave his district.
Somebody's in there.
No, it's not.
Take it away from Brandon.
A hundred percent, I agree with you. And we... It sucks that we have to pull him off there to go do these projects and that's what we're saying, and we're not going to do that. He won't be pulled off next year to go do these because we're not doing any.
And it sucks that you have to be here tonight. It's your job.
Well, nothing does suck about here tonight.
Brandon, Brandon is an employee. He asked you to go do this. But you need to make sure he's paying for what he's worth. You lose him, you're going to be in trouble.
Say that again.
If you lose him, you better pay him what he's actually worth. I know you give him more, but he is worth a lot more than most of these people.
Well, I'm not... I'm not here to argue what somebody's worth tonight. We pay our employees accordingly. He is a good operator, but yes, it's not... It's not been a perfect situation to have him not in his district. And again, I think I've tried to explain why he's come out of his district and it's not just him. It happens in all departments too. We have to pull people. It just so happens that you guys were first, but I mean, we pulled Richard Spielman out, we pulled some of these other guys out of their district to work on these projects. And, and the only reason we pull them off their, their routes to do these projects, there's no other way unless we hire a contractor. And if we hire contractors, now we got a budget money for that. And, and so it is a catch-22. I mean, if, if we're budgeting more money, people complain. And, and so we've tried doing these projects.
In-house.
In-house and, and trying to get some of these roads completely rebuilt to the best of our ability. Uh, by managing the personnel that we have without hiring a ton more people. And it is, it's like killing bacteria. It's, it's hard to hire good operators. Uh, because typically they leave, uh, go someplace like Bettis or Ham's or whatever.
But once you train them, you don't make them sign a contract that I'm going to, you know, if I'm going to put the money in training somebody, then I would want to say, you know, I've got you for two years. I've got you for three years, whatever.
No, the only thing we do is if we get somebody a CDL and we pay for that CDL, we require them to stay with us for a period of time. But no, you can't, I mean.
And, and you know, honestly, right now, since, since we have, two years ago made our pay competitive.
Yep.
We're not losing people because we're making it competitive, or we made it competitive and we're not losing them to Bettis or to Ham's or to whoever else. Us. They're allowed to stay here because they, they don't have to drive in the peak every day, which Paul and I did for around a year, Paul.
But it, it, it does make a difference paying these guys and gals, um, a competitive wage. And now they're, now they're wanting to stay.
Makes a difference if you're invested.
Yes. You're right. Um.
I guess the, it goes back, I mean, something for me, not enough that we got great employees. Brandon lives in our township. I mean, he's part of us.
No, I get it. I get it.
Um, but again, if we're getting by and, you know, pull him off to go somewhere else, then you got to pull somebody else out to, to come on to ours. But what are those operators doing in their area on a daily basis if we've been two years or better without having a dedicated operator? Are over, are those other operators just driving around burning the blade off? I mean, you know, literally doing nothing? Because we should have somebody, and if Galen comes over and he hits the high spots when he can. But there's probably some operators we don't want, but there should be somebody, I mean, if, if they're supposed to finish their area every two weeks, then somebody should be in our area every two weeks.
And we don't require our operators to get over a certain number of miles a day. That is, to me, is the dumbest thing you could require somebody to do. Because they're going to put it in gear, they're going to let it straight forward, they're going to go. What we've tried to do is give these men and, and women the opportunity to, you get quality versus quantity. And if you see something, you fix it while you're there. And that's, I believe that's what the majority of these are doing. You ask what these other operators are doing. A lot of them, uh, where we can, they're going down cleaning those ditches during August, July, and August when it's hot and dry. They're rolling that stuff up on the bank, then they'll come back the next week. We get people, they yell the screen, roll it all up on the bank. Well, give us a chance, let it dry out, they'll come back, turn that blade flat and spread it out. They're doing a lot of that work. I get it you guys have not had Brandon because Brandon.
We haven't had anybody's.
Okay.
We are just flat neglected because you're taking our guy away and nothing anything about it.
What I'm trying to tell you is, I agree with you, and that's going to change. And that's what next year is going to look like. We don't have any projects. Uh, so yeah, he's going to have to play some catch-up, but these other operators are doing other things in their area. But look, what I'm telling you also is, these other operators get pulled out of their districts too to go help. It's not just you guys. And that's what I'm trying to say is that in order to make this work, we've had to pull people out or you hire more people. So it, it, it states that that's the way it is, but in order to do large-scale projects, and I like your idea. Kind of think we start budgeting if we can get sales tax, state passenger. We'll, we'll budget, we'll have local contractors then on these jobs and come in, clean ditches, and go that way. At least take a look at it. But yeah, it has not been perfect. I, I'll agree a hundred percent with you, but it's not a perfect, we don't have a perfect situation set up here because we don't have the funding to make it perfect. But I do believe we've made it better. You guys will agree with that because Brandon's been pulled out. But if you take somebody from Cedar Township down here, he's probably going to say the same thing you guys are. Because we had to pull their operator too.
Well, just my, not to keep you, my point is that we haven't had some roads bladed in a year and a half, and they're not horrible.
Okay.
So I just, are we spending a lot of extra money across the county doing things that we don't need to do just to keep the operators busy?
So what would be your suggestion? Lower, lower number of operators or what, what would be your suggestion if you think that's happening?
I'm.
If you were involved in that decision?
I don't want to fire any employees, you know, if they're, they're good employees. But we have twelve blades, but we're not seeing them all.
Eleven operators.
Eleven operators, twelve blades.
Okay.
We kept one of the older machines that was in good shape so that if Richard Spielman's machine needed service, he'd run it up, grab the other one, and he'd go back to work. Before, he'd stand up there and help.
I guess all I'm saying is how much fuel, wear and tear, hours on the machine is redundant because it's just trying to keep those guys busy.
I don't think that we're seeing that. I really don't.
But we're not.
No, you didn't. You did not. I will agree with you a hundred percent.
But that's what I'm saying is, is if we can get by as a county.
If you're getting by, why are you here?
You don't want to just get by.
That's what I'm saying. No, I'm, I'm saying that as, as a county, do we need eleven blades?
And I, and again, I'll throw that back to you. What would it look like? Would you just have six, five, seven? Um, because what we see is we need all eleven. Maybe you've been down to DePica and Shawnee County and Douglas County, or Soldier Township and Menoken Township. Their blade, blade operas, operators maybe have forty to sixty miles, where ours have close to a hundred. When, when you factor in minimum maintenance. And if they're doing their job right, when it's hot and dry, they're out on minimum maintenance. We've always given them direction. In the springtime, you hit the minimum maintenance, get them opened up so guys can go plant, they can go to grass. In the fall, you do the same thing. Make sure they're opened up and their ruts are out so that they can go get cattle out or they can get crops out. That's what we've set up. Does it always happen? No. But, you know, I don't know that there's a perfect situation with the amount of funding that we have. Um, but again, do we lower that number to eight and give them a hundred and thirty miles each?
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm just.
Yeah.
Brainstorming, I guess. I'm not standing behind any one specific thing.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that we've, you know, we're proving that.
But I don't, I don't think Paul has been good enough. That, that's the whole thing though, Luke. You're not proving that, that this has worked.
No, I'm saying it works.
And I, I agree, but you're saying, well, we've done it for two years, so we're good. Well, if you were good, you wouldn't be here talking about this tonight.
No, I'm not saying we're good. I'm saying, is there waste in the other areas?
I don't.
I don't even say money. I don't believe so.
If they're doing their job correctly, there shouldn't be any waste because, I mean, have you, anybody in here ever brought a blade?
Donnie.
Okay, so if you're doing your job correctly, just, you're doing different things at different times of the year, right? Springtime, summertime, fall, winter. You're doing different things. So I don't believe there's waste. I'm telling you, I want, I want to call in one because it drives me nuts when I see some of this stuff and I'm thinking, these are easy things to fix. That's, some guys will fix them, some people won't. That's why I'm saying we've hired a superintendent to make sure this stuff's getting done, hold people accountable. Uh, I thought it would get done on its own, but that's just not happening.
How many miles was this, you keep saying Brandon's over on Dudley Road. How many miles is that? How many miles were they?
Complete rebuild?
And just for the record, Brandon's not by himself. There are multiple blade operators over there with him, multiple dump truck operators with.
From, from two fifty-four to whitey.
Job himself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, half of it was done and we're finishing up now.
What's a push on Dudley Road?
I'm not familiar.
Is that, is that answer out?
It, it was a project that was identified several years ago that needed to be rebuilt because of the amount of traffic that went up and, and where it connected to. So as a group, management team from out there, we decided that this was, we identified as a road that could be rebuilt. And again, when you rebuild, you go in and you, you clean tubes, you elevate it in certain spots, you get the humps out so that it's not dangerous. Replace tubes, uh, and it takes a long time, uh, to rebuild those. Uh, but I'm all for if we have the funding to look at local contractors to do some of this work and maybe that's the answer to it. But again, somebody's got to be out there to make sure that local contractor is doing his job, right?
That's your job. That's your job, superintendent.
Yep. Yeah. So, yeah, we've got to have somebody on that to make sure that that's getting done correctly. But I'd like to see, again, just to have that conversation between you and, and our new superintendent when he gets hired. Um, and, and a blade operator and, and see what that looks like, see what that conversation can, can be and go from there. Are you willing to do that?
Yeah, I'd like to find two other people in the township as well. I would rip it in as trustee and treasurer. I could only do one.
Right there, there, treasure, you're probably saying, dang it, you got no power.
And that's the thing is it's not a, there is no treasurer. Second, I mean, it, but it.
Right.
I, I just wanted to, from the beginning, I don't have all the answers. I don't have any answers. I just wanted, and I appreciate you opening a conversation of giving them a little bit more say or control.
Or voice.
Back to the people.
Of voice.
Yeah. Does he have any volunteers?
Paul, get Paul back here.
I don't live in Banners.
Well, then what are you doing here?
My mailbox is in Banners that I do it.
His mailbox is fifty feet from the township line. You got postal digger?
Yes.
We'll do it.
Yeah, I, I'd like to get some feedback from you. Um, once we get this done, we can be in contact with you. Set that up, introduce you guys so that, so that you have an opportunity to say, have, just have a conversation and see how that, how that would work.
And I don't think that probably, I was just looking online today, uh, under the statutes, and I, I think that you just want to have a, I don't want to say it, a group.
Advisory panel?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. An advisory panel because if you, you as the trustee, if you had a treasurer and a secretary, then they would have to be appointed and sworn in, the whole nine yards. And I don't know, you just really want to feel that right now.
Yeah, I think you guys get together and say.
Just have an advisory panel.
Two other people and.
And I'm also curious to see what the other townships say. I mean.
Well, yeah.
It, it took a month to get this one, you know, through, I'd like to see, I know it's taxing on you guys, but to, to get through the fifteen townships or how, or maybe you do, combine some of them to, to see what everybody else has.
Yeah, because I, I would envision there's going to be townships where I don't know if anybody will show up. And I don't know that anybody will step forward and volunteer. I mean, I don't know that, but we'll find out.
We'll find out. I think what, I think what we'll do is we'll get Christie, give us a list of all of you elected officials in the townships. Because I think all of them have at least one.
I don't know that they do.
Kind of sparse.
Yeah, I don't know that they do.
So, and, and if not, then we'll try to contact some people in the townships and, and get these meetings set up so we can move forward with this. Uh, I don't think you'll find any of the three of us that are, that are dragging our heels saying, no, no, no. We're willing to try anything. We're willing to work with you guys to, to make this county better. I mean, that's just, I live here too. I've lived here for a long, long time, so that's what we want to do. What do you guys think about like township work sessions like this quarterly or every six months or, you know, address?
And that.
About that.
Yeah.
And just to see if things are moving the way the township does.
Yeah, I like, I like having the feedback from people who live in the area. It helps us, you know, shape what we, what we're going to do. I also, I, I also think the other part of this is helping people understand the whole budget portion that's in, how that all works. Because most people don't understand. We, I mean, what we have to do to try to come up with money just to operate the county.
Other than.
You probably have pretty good ideas. But, but it is.
It's changed a lot since I've been here too.
I mean, we live up here too. I've lived here all my life. I, I don't like paying property tax anymore than anybody else does. I've got a lot of phone calls today because of property taxes and that. You know, people don't realize, oh, if you read that, you'll see what your school districts get. I said, we're revenue natural this year.
That was my point too, was, you know.
Thank you.
Going to road curators a lot.
Yeah. And so to me, it, it helps educate you guys on what finances we do have available and how much money we can spend on gravel and machinery and those types of things.
And what you just said a minute ago too, as far as, you know, meetings like this do help us shape our policies.
For sure.
To be able to budget money to figure and, and to come up with policies to figure out how we can do these things. You know, I mean, we don't just sit there and grab this out of the air. We sit there and we think about it, we talk about it, we come up with policies that, that we think will work. Unless we get feedback from you guys, you know, with, without pitchforks and torches, then, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to come in here quarterly, six months, whatever, and talk to you and, you know, work these things out. That's, that's what we're here for. So I'm, like I said, you've got my phone number. You got my email. Do it. I, I don't think that I've never responded to anybody. I, somebody called, no, I've called you. I've called you.
Okay.
Uh, my thing is, is if, if you and I don't agree on something, you have the ultimate say and.
But we still, we can, we can agree to disagree and still walk down the road side by side, bullshit.
Right, they're, they're not personal. But I'm saying that we have no recourse other than in an election.
Yeah.
And that's one person, and that's, that's just my whole thing is the three people are, it's difficult to represent the entire, specifically River Bridge. I don't want any part of regular budgeting, things like that, but we all drive the roads. It's the, it's the number one issue other than property taxes and that's part of it.
Okay, my question is, you said Pop County, you just went to seven?
Five.
Five. Didn't Jackson County years ago have my, my?
Not by my knowledge, I think it's.
I mean, I. Since nineteen seventy. Okay.
Nineteen what?
Seventy-three is when I started.
From, from my knowledge, it's always been three.
I'm, I'm saying years, I mean, I'm talking years.
What year was, what year did we become, uh, this form of government? It used to be county.
As far as, always as far as I know.
That, I, now I've always been told that happened back in the early sixties.
Yeah, there was a township.
Like I said, I started in seventy-three. Is there a reason why we can't have more commissioners? Is that something that has to go before a war to stay that?
They cost more money.
They cost more money, more property tax. Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, sure, you can have it made if you want.
Yeah.
That's where I see this as a volunteer position back.
You're a unique individual though, in the sense that you're willing to volunteer.
I think if you give some power to people, they'll, they will come.
And that's what we're going to find out.
Yeah, that's, that's my personal.
We're going to, we're going to find that out.
I mean, I got, I got selected to do this and I just decided that I wanted to have a say, I wanted to change, make a change.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And I appreciate you guys taking the opportunity.
Thanks, you boot for yourself.
I didn't want to.
I know you got one other question, and you call it whenever you're ready, but, you know, we've talked about these chip and seal roads and how bad they fall apart. And, I mean, we spent sixty thousand dollars on Cabernet or whatever.
Eighty.
Oh, God, being generous. How would you guys and gals feel if we did like what we did down by Delia? That was partially asphalt, partially chip and seal, kind of gravel, rough road. We went in and ground that up. We had beds come in. I called a giant road killer and they just come in and they grind it up. We wet it, we sheep's foot it, we pack it, we top it for us and we gravel. Are there some chip and seal roads in your area that you would want ground up and put back to gravel?
The people who live on them, no.
I just ask that question because that was the other way of fixing them though.
Right, that's the thing is, the chip and seal's there for five years and it's done. At least with a gravel road, even if you spent the seventy, or the, you know, the mile and a half that we have, which a half mile of that, there are no residences on it. It's the first mile. You spend the seven thousand dollars a year, you basically paid the same as what you paid the chip and sealer, and you can fix it. If you, if you dust controlled it, if you dust controlled that mile, you ground it up, put it back to gravel, dust controlled it, you can go fix it at the end of the year. And if it costs seven thousand dollars for a mile, thirty-five thousand dollars in five years, we spend forty-five or thirty thousand a mile was what was quoted this year, in five years, that's not going to be the same.
All that is, is to fill a few holes and squirt some oil on it and throw some chip on it.
You haven't done that every year.
No, it's, they're on a five-year rotation.
Yeah.
All, all of them.
What I'm saying is that the thirty thousand dollars for that one mile lasts five years and you can't touch it. And it's, we're, we're going to live with it for five years.
Right, and that's my.
If it was back to gravel and dust controlled, take the chip and seal and dust control them, which we talked about that time. Pay for the dust control every year, you have the same result at the same amount of money, but we can fix issues that crop up with.
So you'd rather have a dust control?
I personally would. I don't live on it. I'd have to drive it.
Now, I'm just curious what everybody thinks.
Can you guys take that big iron and heat it up like they do on some of these roads? On that road at all?
The big iron?
Yeah, it's a big, pop recycling. Yeah. How come you haven't guys checked into that?
I, no, I'm not familiar with that piece of equipment, so. I, no, I'm not familiar with that piece of equipment, so.
And that's throwing good money after bad. That's one more process that we're.
But it flattens that.
Yeah.
One more check and see.
Oh, one more check and see.
Not that fast. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Don't take this wrong, but I love farmers. But the more of these farmers from Nebo County move down in here, the worse the roads are going to get. We've got 100,000 pound semi traders going up and down these roads.
I will agree with you that 85 to 90,000 semis going down, pound semis going down gravel roads is hard. Most, most people, and I am one, I have semis, but most people drive slower. The slower you drive, the better off it is because reducing the amount of dust you create and you're not as hard over it. But there's harvest. It's, it's faster. And, and so how do you find that balance of, of creating roads that are worthy of, of normal commuter traffic and having, having the equipment on? It's tough. I think the dust control, if you go in and prep that road correctly by putting gravel on it, you wet it and you roll it in, the key is rolling it in and then wet it again and then put the dust control on it. If you, how many of you have ever driven 142 before? Very many. That road, that road holds together tremendously for the impact of, I mean, if you ever see the tribe coming down through, there were five trucks right on the tail, just hard haul and hang. I mean, it's held together well, but it is an annual cost. And we've looked at, Luke, we've looked at trying to find ways to get it on the rail because it's much cheaper if we buy it by the carload. The closest rail would be Delia or north here. We bought our own trucks so that we could do some of the work ourselves. That doesn't seem to work very good either. So.
We bought a tanker for it.
In, in that, in the K road instance, that was just self-inflicted misery. I mean, dumping the hot asphalt on there, making washboards and then going back. I mean, that was just the wrong process. That's.
Yeah.
I mean, talking about the, the equipment going down, I'd like to make K road a toll road to get the Nebo County farmers to have to pay some, because they're using our road like they don't.
I've got another corner of mine, but we'll go.
I mean, we live on it, so we.
Yeah, I understand what you're.
But it's, as I stated that one day, there's two roads in Jackson County that run all the way through and K is one.
Yeah.
And it sees a lot of traffic.
A lot of similes.
Yeah, and, and that's why getting this, this 30-plus million dollar grant was something we were trying to do to, to make it a better road that would withstand that kind of traffic. You put six inches of asphalt on a road that's got a bit of a dent, makes a huge difference.
I hate driving the tribal roads. They are terrible.
Well, they got, well, that's where they won't pay. Because see, they got the 32 million dollar grant.
Right, but.
And we didn't.
They paid them all and now there, there's a crack there on 40 feet.
They're on, they're second. And they'll tell you that they're, they'll tell you that they're putting $30 million into Jackson County roads, but it came from the state and the federal government. Are you kidding me? You know, I mean, if you look at 158 that runs all the way to E road, that road fell apart because it wasn't built right the first time. I mean, now they're going in, they're rebuilding it. Rebuilding it with federal tax dollars and state tax dollars. Don't get me started. I just, it, it is frustrating. We, we have gravel roads, they have asphalt roads.
And don't go picking on my goodness.
So I'm not picking on anybody individually. The federal government's who ticks Nebo because the federal government's the one that set this process up, not, not the tribe. They're doing what they're, they're doing what they're allowed to do. It's the federal government that should be reimbursing Jackson County. And that, that's a whole other fight.
People who have never driven a country road are the ones making the decisions. They're the ones giving the money.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah. All right, anybody have anything else? So we'll get with you and see, get meetings set up. Let us get our superintendent hired.
Get to, you know, talk to the rest of them too, you know.
Sure. Before you use anything.
It works on elections.
So. So see if you can get two other people to volunteer to help you. And then, you know, we'll, we'll get something set up. I forget our superintendent hired with you and Brandon's him. And let's give him just a few, a little while to get his feet wet before we throw everything at.
Do we know how much longer is W going to take?
I think it should have been more than that, but that's just beside the point. So we're getting close to getting him back. Yeah, I, I don't.
Should have been.
Yes.